If you have anything, Richard? One way or the other. Got a couple more minutes, I guess.
One second.
He's been missing, right?
Uh?
He's kind of just missing sometimes.
He was at the meeting Thursday.
There you go.
Went pretty good, although we had a guest speaker there. He got a little long, didn't it? Finally, I kind of cut him off. Lauren needed leave and he was still talking. But mainly went over mining. There's a pile of miners in this county.
Michael mining down there where I was.
And y'all sent out in my.
On the whole thing. I couldn't find there one.
I didn't even have it. Cause I wasn't.
Yeah, it was Thursday. It was past Thursday.
I don't know.
Yeah, I knew you were. It was three hours. Guess we'll give them one up. The next one's the 20th of February.
What is February?
20th of February. It's a Thursday, the same, pretty much the same time of the month. Thursday in that room over there.
That gives my last day teaching power again.
Go ahead. All right, I think it's seven thirty or close to. We'd certainly have a quorum. Appreciate everyone being here. I'll open the call to order and welcome, certainly welcome all our guests. And hopefully some of y'all will be speaking on the activities tonight. Certainly have a quorum. And as the agenda says, we have to have elections to this meeting, organizational meeting. Did you want to take it over, Ashley?
I'm actually gonna have Clarence do it.
Oh, Clarence, all right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For those watching at home, I'm Clarence Monday. I'm the interim county administrator and I will lead you through the election of the chairman. And having said that, are there any nominations for chairman?
Number after Moyer.
Second.
Okay, we have a nomination on the floor for Mr. Moyer. Are there any other nominations for chairman? He's not saying no, I don't think. Are there any other nominations for chairman? Going three times, any other nominations for chairman? Is there a motion to close the nominations for chairman?
Take the place.
Mr. Easter made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second? Any discussion on the motion to close nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor of closing the nominations for chairman, raise your hand. Julie passed. Likewise, any opposition, just for the record? No? Now we'll call the question. Those in favor of Mr. Moyer for chairman of the planning commission, raise your hand. All opposed? Carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Railroad. I appreciate it, but I'm really just a facilitator. You know, y'all have more power, as much power as I have, one way or the other. Just may have a few more meetings to attend than that. All right, now we need a vice chair. Any nomination for vice chair?
I nominate Roy Easter.
Second.
Roy Easter's been nominated by Mr. Morris and second by Mr. Barnard. Any more nominations? It's a motion, close the nominations.
So moved.
Mars, Mars made a motion to close it, second. Bates, second it. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion for Roy Easter as vice chairman, make a notice or raise the hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Congratulations, Roy. All right, if you look in your packet, I think it's the third, fourth page, there establish the dates and times. Pretty much the fourth Monday as it's set up now each month, seven thirty here. I don't know if we have to approve that. I know you gotta have a lot of meetings, but but certainly ought to be aware of that. And of course, in your packets, also the rules and protocols for the planning commission. Main thing is you try, certainly try to attend. Appreciate that. Get a quorum or certainly let someone know that you can't.
You do have action taken, time, meeting place and the papers.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Phelps. Can I get a motion to accept the place, time, and the meeting dates as of now?
I'll make a motion.
Easter made a motion, second. Harris, second. Any more discussion? All in favor, make a note, raise your hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carries for acceptance. And then I don't know, in your packet, it's your terms, just like right many of us supposed to go off at the end of this year. Which probably ought to be checked staggered a little more. And then the subcommittees. Believe it's in the packet. If not, I got one printed to know exactly what subcommittee you are on. But really, you're welcome to any of them. I forget what, if it's in here.
It's on the next page.
Next page. So we got them. But just because you don't have an X there, if you'd like to attend, we'll try to certainly keep everybody informed as to when the meetings will be. Anyone else know anything else we need in the organizational meeting? For now, moving on to the minutes. We had a regular meeting in November twenty five and no meeting in December. Any get a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Easter made the motion.
Second.
Morris seconded the motion for the minutes to be approved. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to accept the minutes of November twenty five, twenty twenty four and having no meeting in December twenty twenty four, make a raise your hand. I'd like to move along. Anybody against it goes to the not unanimously. Sorry for that. I don't know of any old business write-off. New business in your packet, we have two public hearings this evening. First one's a special exemption request for, I think it's hidden, hiding, wedding events and gatherings. Is Michael gonna speak on it? Michael is speaking, is taking, helping us now in the planning commission. He's working with the group that board supervisors have, just like Clarence is, to help us through this until we get a new administrator and a new, I guess, associate, whatever, whatever his title is. So if anybody doesn't know him, that's who it is, is Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
With me tonight is Curtis Rogers. He's a colleague that is also assisting the county. So this first application is special exception twenty twenty four dash orders. And it's they're requesting a special permit to operate in.
We're not coming through. We're not coming through intermittently.
That might be better. Try that.
All right, let me, can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. I want to do my audio on my cell phone, but the application is special exception permit for an assembly hall. The property is located off Five Forks Road. It's tax map forty-two dash eighty-four. The assembly hall use is permitted by special exception in the RR three zoning district. Additionally, per section three twenty-five dash three point one four. In the RR three zoning district, they also are required to have a special exception permit when they're conducting more than two permitted uses on the property. So in addition to the assembly hall use, there's currently a single family dwelling on the property as well as a home occupation. That would constitute three uses on the property. Again, applicants seeking an assembly hall use, the property is seven point seven three acres. We provided you in the staff report, the intent of the RR three zoning district, as well as the definition for assembly hall zoning dimensional setback requirements. Although I don't believe they are proposing to construct any structures, they're intending to use the existing grounds of the property as well as existing structures on the property, as far as we understand it. We've also provided you with sections from the conference of plan, the properties in the rural and agricultural preservation area, planning area. And we've provided you with the policies and strategies for that planning area. In addition, the following goals, objectives, and strategies are relevant. Community character and vision to protect the rural character, cultural heritage, and scenic beauty of the county. Recognize that these are valuable and irreplaceable resources. Agricultural forestry and natural resources, and then economic development. Listed in the staff report are the special exception permit criterion standards, and this is what we use to evaluate the application by. That a special exception may be approved by the governing body only if it is permitted as a special exception in the district in which it is located. That the location is appropriate and not in conflict with the conference of plan and the statement of intent for the district. That the public health, safety, and general welfare will not be adversely affected. The necessary safeguards will be provided for the protection of surrounding property, persons, and neighborhood values. And that the additional standards set by the governing body have been complied with. So based on our review of the application, we do recommend that the planning commission consider the following conditions if issuing a recommendation of approval. There are six conditions recommended that the proposed use shall be developed and operated in general conformity with the layout plan and statements contained in the application. That events conducted on the property shall be limited to a maximum of seventy-five guests. That events shall be limited to a maximum of twenty-four within any calendar year. That events shall be prohibited between the hours of ten PM to eight AM, Sunday through Thursday. Between the hours of eleven PM to eight AM, Friday and Saturday. That while the special exception permit is valid and exercised, the permit holder, landowner, shall allow reasonable administrative inspections by the zoning administrator to determine compliance with the permit and that the zoning administrator shall provide no less than seven days' notice to the permit holder, landowner, of an intent to conduct an inspection. And six, prior to commencement of the assembly hall use, the permit holder, landowner shall apply for and receive a zoning permit as well as a building permit and or change of use occupancy classification if necessary. That application and issuance of a zoning permit shall be subject to the following. Submission of a parking plan ensuring that no vehicles will be parked in the right of way of Five Forks Road and that there are safe egress and ingress for vehicles accessing the property and circulating the property. That VDOT has reviewed and approved all ingress, egress points proposed to be used in association with the assembly hall use. And that the Department of Health has reviewed the proposed use and identified any operational or licensing requirements. We've also provided for you three options. Option one, based on a recommendation of approval with conditions. Option two, deferral of the application, and then option three, denial of the application. And I can tell you a little bit of background. I met with the Hindens, well, on the phone. I've talked to them several times back towards the end of the year, part of them making this application. They talked about what their goals and intent were, which were to conduct events on the property. The county does have a special event permit process, which is not something required whenever you're holding events that are fewer than a hundred days, excuse me, a hundred attendees. When we were reviewing it, though, we felt like if this was something they intended to do regularly, that this was the best step for them to seek a special exception for the assembly hall use on the property. And so that's the application that they've made. And I'm happy to answer any questions now or later in the meeting.
Thank you for the review. Any questions from the planning commission members before we open the public hearing?
I was looking for some clarification between their permitted uses that exceeds two permitted uses. Assembly hall in addition to single family dwelling and home occupation uses that home occupation, single family dwelling seem like they're the same thing, right?
I had a question on that, too.
Under the zoning ordinance, they're listed as as two different use types, so absent anything else, clarifying that, we've always considered them or in our time, considered those as two separate uses on the property.
I guess we're asking for clarification, like how would you have home occupation without having a home on the property?
But you wouldn't necessarily have a home occupation just because you had a home.
Oh, so if there's just a empty, an abandoned house on a property, it's still considered a use, even though nobody's using it? So.
Well, no, if there were a home on the property and they were just residing there and there was no home occupancy business. That's, so a home occupation is a business conducted at a residential property.
We were like, okay, that's it. Means you're in your home. That's why I was like, oh.
Oh, no, sorry about that.
Running out of their home, separate from the assembly hall, separate from living there.
That's correct, yes.
I took it as a business.
Any more questions, Michael, before we open?
So what home occupation business do they have currently?
Yeah, what's the current business?
It would be the assembly.
No, sir, it's a contractor's business that they conduct.
Contractors.
Yes.
All right. Okay. We got in in a minute. Any more questions? Hearing none, open public hearing to discuss the assembly hall or the application. Anyone like to speak, come to the mic, state your name and address and try to keep it under three to five minutes. You had a rough day.
Every. Move that up a little bit here. My name is Weston Hinden. Address is fifteen nine oh one Five Forks Road, Amelia. For some clarification, moved here a little over two years ago. Class A contractor, not really gonna try to just give that up, so, but we're Not really going to try to just give that up, so, but we're pretty much inactive on that aspect, so. Being that we have a license with the county, it constitutes that, that third use, so. Maybe a little confusing, but the house, my little business, and then the, um, meetings and gatherings, small weddings, baby showers, birthdays, you know, we've got a beautiful place and simply want to share. So I'm not sure if that is enough said to help clarify the third use, which is, you know, was small concern for us, but at the same time, you know, it, it's, it's important if I want to do any building or repair, I'm qualified. It's real simple, easy thing just to keep the license active and, you know, move on from there, so. Happy to take any questions specifically about, um, any of the conditions that Michael put forth.
Is your intent to put up a tent each time or to get like a permanent tent that would be there?
Well, we have, uh, tents. I have two tents that we can, um, put up. We would like to leave them up. Again, um, pending on our success and the communities and, and people's interest in what we have to offer as far as the, uh, our, our ground, the pond, the beauty, you know, those types of intrinsic values that people, you know, might find attractive for, you know, wanting to share it. So, you know, it's a, it's an infancy stage where we're looking at tents because it was the most practical thing to do. Uh, if we get, uh, if we get a good response, we'd love to, um, you know, swap those out for a simple, uh, timber frame style pavilion, which we've done with the, um, one end of the house. Uh, keeping a theme, going with, you know, Russon.
Just any concerns with the, uh, the list of recommendations that they gave?
No, they, they, they make sense in that everything should have some kind of quantity or guideline, and I, I, I can follow all that. I don't, I don't see. I'm, I'm not sure about number six as far as how to, uh, go about that last step, so I'll. No, I think it was a zoning permit. Something, uh, there's some kind of qualification to it.
Yeah.
So obviously we would need to just be coached through all them, the, the VDOT process we've got, if we had an existing curb cut where we, you know, it was already on the property. Giving, giving access to the primary parking spot. Secondary and third, so I got three spots. We've got a large gravel circular, uh, in front of the building. Around the maintenance and, you know, a, um, remote building. We've got the one, if, if you have the package where it shows parking close or paralleling Route thirty-eight. Um, that's an in and out egress right there. We've got a line of hollies separating there in the pines, so there's rooms, you know, for, you know, fifteen, twenty vehicles there. I've got the loop. I've got a road that goes across the pond and I've got other space, so. Uh, you know, at seventy-five, uh, people, I would assume we would see somewhere between twenty to thirty, maybe thirty-five cars total, depending upon how many come in pairs, couples and, you know, carpooling, so I don't see it as being any kind of a stumbling block. Um, I think the, uh, maximum number of events, twenty-four. Seems reasonable at first, I guess, six months.
Oh, I was curious.
That I, 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 I'm not a big fan of being restricted. In that respect, um, I believe that we have and we should be able to, um, manage ourselves and if we manage ourselves well, then, uh, you know, the community can speak up if we don't manage ourselves well, but to establish a, a, a limiting number on something that is reasonably unknown, because other assembly halls in the community don't have, they have an open door, they can, can, uh, they can come and assemble as they choose. You know, we're not the Masonic Hall up the road where they've, but if we're going to be in that category, I believe that we should have the freedom to assemble. It could be as, you know, then we have to define gathering. And we have to define other things that can impact, and I think if we are responsible. Not only, you know, neighbors and folks in the community, um, if we step out of line, yeah, come slap me on the hand or upside the head or the two by four if I'm really being, you know, stupid, but uh, I believe we can manage quite well, because we do not uh, intend to have. We're, we're not party people. We have, uh, we have a beautiful place. My bro, Lori is very good at. Loves it. We keep it, you know, neat as a pin and, um, we'd like to change our direction a little bit as I enter my sixties and stay home a lot more and share what we have with, with people and enjoy their special days.
I think.
So.
Probably if you did in time, it approached that, you could probably come back before us to extend that.
Yeah, I would like it noted today though, that it, that one, I think the twenty-four is. I don't think that there should be. I think there should be, uh, the same regulation that you have at the Masonic Lodge. Throws and they go beyond their timelat and they're a little loud, they're going to get. Somebody's going to come by with some blue lights and say, hey, quiet down or don't do what you're not supposed to do.
Well, that would go back to the zoning, um, administrator. He would follow up through with that.
Can I ask, where did the twenty-four come from? Because I kind of agree with them. None of the other venues in town are limited. So why would they be limited? Some was not limited. Whit- Whispering Pines isn't limited. The Masonic Lodge, the BF, none of those assembly halls are limited.
Some of them are reading or something. There are some different.
So I'm just, I guess that's what I was wondering, because twenty-four is really low. I mean, that's not even every other weekend, and that means one day every other weekend, so they can't even use, you couldn't even have two birthday parties on the same weekend. And I mean, like, that's just seems very limited to me. As much need as there is to me, like, I see so much need, because every week on Facebook it's, where can I have a birthday party? Where can I have a baby shower? And the answers are always basically none, unless you go to the country club. Or, you know, there's just not a whole lot of options. So I personally would like to know where the twenty-four is. The twenty-four a set thing from our ordinance? Or is that just, okay, so if it's not from ordinance, then I'll just be interested in where that, where that's coming from or how that was determined.
Yeah, that's a, it's a staff recommendation and, and it's based on some of our experiences in other localities. Uh, as being a reasonable number for an event facility that's, you know, in a rural area where there's also residences nearby. And there are certainly some facilities in your community that are allowed to operate events by right that are not subject to a conditional or a special exception permit. But in the zoning district they are, and we felt that it was necessary to impose some limit, whether twenty-four is too low. Uh, or excuse me, is, is, is too, uh, much of a bar. Um, that's something you can certainly, uh, recommend on. So I, I do, I would recommend to you that there be some limit and, and the applicant can always go back. Um, come back and, and seek to open that up and you can evaluate whether or not what is being requested is reasonable, but I would also tell you that no limit may cause an issue, uh, you know, if there's, if you're finding out that there's too many events, given the location of the property and, and other uses nearby. Um, you know, that would require the county, uh, to reopen the, the, the special exception and, and see about posing a, a limit on that permit, so. You could go either direction.
And that's your question, Mr. Hars.
Yeah. Yeah, I answered it. It's property.
Somewhat.
I kind of tend to agree with your thoughts.
I mean, I'm not saying totally unlimited. I just, to me, twenty-four is really low. There's a hundred and fifty-six possible weekend days. And twenty-four is, I don't think that's just so low. I stood the map.
Well, and then we'd have to.
Weekdays. I know most of them are going to be Fridays every Tuesday.
Yeah, and, and not everybody. You know, if we're blessed, somebody takes that Friday or takes that Saturday and, um, well, they have to get married or they want to get married or they have to have the birthday. So what would be, you know, if we have something on a Wednesday? So then what's the definition of an event? What is the, what a criteria has to get met in order to qualify as one of those twenty-four? It, it can, yeah, I'm not going to say it's an administrative thing, but now we're getting into there, you know, I believe those restrictions are crossing or they're opening up the possibility of, um, in my opinion, being challenged. I want to know what the definition is. I want to know the criteria. Is somebody going to be there so that they can monitor? It just seems burdensome, uh, at, at, in the least, to have a restriction. I believe it's, it's prudent on the board. Come, come on out. Please. Co- come on out. We can sit down, we can walk around and you can get familiar with what it is that we're trying to do. And you can monitor, you can check. Obviously, there's going to be. We'll just call it attention. I mean, I'm the free guy. I've had millions of things since we've, you know, taken over the property. We've done a lot and, um, you know, we've, I believe we're in pretty much an asset so far and we'd like to continue that route, um, so. I'm, like I said, I'm just not a big guy of the restriction. I would like to find, follow guidelines. Manage our behavior, manage their behavior. Conduct business and let people have, you know, a, a nice event, so.
Hey, you discuss this with your neighbors?
Yes, yeah, Bridget, um, and Allison, we've personally, you know, told them what they're doing, what, what, what we intend to do through this application. Um, they have no issues. We encourage, you know, any, any questions. Um, I think it's evident by who's not here. Public notification for two weeks. If somebody was really, uh, had a bone to pick with something going on, happening on Five Forks, they would hear. They would be here. They would be stating, oh, no. And then it, you know, then they would have to, in my opinion, have a good argument, you know, I, I don't mind a good argument, just give me something to work with, so.
We have pretty much asked that question, because a lot of things come in, they never see the neighbors.
Yeah.
The neighbors never show up until they come to this meeting.
You know, not to say that, uh, you know, that Bridget probably hasn't, um, said, man, those folks are moving fast. Well, we, we do things, we're doers, okay? We hit the ground running. If there's something broke, we're going to fix it. If we're going to improve or replace, we're going to do it now. And so everybody that stops by is like, man, you guys have done a lot. And yes, we have. We've done a lot in two years. Making some changes, making it as maintenance free and, uh, you know, for our projection as far as our retirement and making things the way that we want them, so. Uh, we just want to share.
Any more questions, Mr. Ethan? I don't think he's any right now. Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else like to speak for or against? Just come forward, state your name.
That might be the one, maybe, possibly. Anthony Wayne Winstead, uh, we live at, uh, eight thousand Pemberton Drive. Amelia Courthouse, Virginia, right around the corner. We're not contiguous. This is my beautiful wife, Monica. Um, I did want to let you know that, uh, we are newcomers to Amelia, but I can tell you that we lived in the metropolis of Pintown, North Carolina, which did not have a brand new pressure washed water tower that said a bright future. I think we had two closed schools, two open churches and a post office. I had more tractors crossing my driveway than I did, uh, vehicles, so. Um, I like seeing the fact that this is one of the reasons that Monica and I moved to Amelia. I, um, um, retired military, uh, worked for the Department of Veterans Affairs, uh, uh, registered nurse, and we chose Amelia because we saw it as not only somewhere we could retire, but also somewhere that could grow. And I absolutely find the exception sought consistent with the properties that are adjacent. Uh, you have the lodges, we have the fright vest, we have the mud events. And, um, you're asking if I'm concerned about that noise? Hardly, my friend. Um, and I again, you know, have family that I would like to draw through this area. And having, uh, an event area so close. And the amount of work, uh, that, that Weston has done and Lori, she's a master gardener, you can tell. If you've ever, uh, uh, I, I would not recommend you taking a pause on that elbow unless you want to get rear ended. Uh, however, if there were a pull off, I'd highly recommend it, because the aesthetic of the property is, uh, really beautiful, uh, across the street. You have this, you know, lovely little Christmas, um, tree farm and I, I just, uh, 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 one more asset to the town of Amelia. I do not find in any way as being harmful. But only something that might would provide benefit to, uh, longer term growth. And, uh, dare I say, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Appreciate you comments. Anyone else like to speak for or against? We don't have anyone on camera there.
Some Lori Hinden. Um, I thought I would let you all know that we, um, Weston and I have, have moved quite a few times in our married lives together for uh, employment reasons, uh, or otherwise. Uh, we're members of, uh, we're residents of Powhatan County for about nineteen years. Um, I'm a retired teacher. Weston has done an awful lot of coaching over the years. Uh, we've been chamber of commerce members in Powhatan for almost twenty years. We do a lot of volunteering. Um, and like my husband said, when we moved here, we kind of hit the ground running. I met Noel Berry. We, um, from our construction business, which by the way is, we have an office in our house where we keep books and our clients are elsewhere, so I mean, we don't do any business with any clients with our construction business on our property at all. It's simply just for, uh, appointments. Um, you know, computer work, office work, phone calls and all. But anyway, we had met Noel Berry and, um, got involved with the community Thanksgiving dinner. Um, our youngest son has been a volunteer at the, um, at Company Four in Powhatan, uh, for a number of years as a volunteer firefighter, so we support all of our local EMS, our firefighters, and we support directly. Um, you know, we get the phone calls. We always ask if they're a paid solicitor and if they are, thank you, but we give directly, so we've given generously to all of our, um, all of our people like that that keep the county running and safe. Uh, we also have participated. We've been fortunate enough to be able to, uh, to make the commitment to help to cook the food the day ahead of time, and it's been wonderful to be able to do that. Um, we have talked to all of our neighbors, uh, around us and, uh, in fact, Bridget's pretty excited because we'd like to, uh, have Bridget be our preferred floral vendor at, um, for anybody who needs or, or wants, uh, florals of any sort. Um, again, we've talked to Rattlips who own all the property across the street, going down to where their, their barn is, you know, that houses their Christmas shop and all that. We've talked to them. Um, so there have been so many people, uh, ever since we moved in that have been so wonderful that have stopped by to say hi. They could literally be a quarter of a mile or ten miles down the road and, you know, they would come by as we were, um, renovating and restoring and just, you know, moving in and again tweaking different things on the property and welcome us to Amelia and, you know, say, you know, I'm your neighbor. It's so happy to be here and, and I kind of describe our experience kind of like how Powhatan was twenty years ago, even though Powhatan is still a great community. But people have been very supportive and in fact, uh, the sweet little lady stopped by about maybe three months ago. And she said, what are you all doing here? And now our intention, when we moved here, you know, our intention was not to do this, but the feedback that we have gotten from so many people that have randomly stopped by that know the history of that log cabin that's a hundred years old this year, um, that maybe knew some of that know the history of that log cabin that's a hundred years old this year, um, that maybe knew some of the previous owners. We have a little old building on the property that we were told used to be a store, we completely restored it. It was about ready to crumble. In fact, um, Richard's Crane Service, they, we hired them to come and move it on a new foundation. So we've done a lot of restoration work. Um, so our intention when we moved here wasn't to, hey, let's open, you know, a venue. It was to become part of the community, which we have, to be an absolute asset. We're very respectful to all of our community members. But as time has gone on and a few health things have flared up, you know, we're thinking, wow, you know, what, how can we, we make this um, already existing beautiful property and the character and and really the historical value it has to the community as well? How can we, you know, um, I guess, just open that up for for other people? So this little lady stopped by one day and and I didn't want to say anything because obviously it's not, um, it's not the timing right now to go broadcasting to people, this is what we're going to do, this is what we're going to do because of going, having to go through the process. So she was so sweet, she told me, she said, boy, I would, I would have loved to have asked you all if I could have had our family reunion here. She said, we had to find a place way out in Charlotte Courthouse. And and she had over a hundred people or something. Um, but she said, I would have loved to just stop by and ask you all if we could have had our party here. And I said, well, you know, maybe in the future that might be possible. Um, so anyway, and and the thing with the twenty-four really kind of caught me off guard, you know, in our conversations with Mr. Zainer, you know, in the fall. None of, uh, any of that was ever mentioned at all. So, you know, again, as we're looking at this, uh, again, I retired early from teaching a few years back to help Weston with our construction business. Again, he's needing to to slow down and and, uh, just do something different. Um, and and again, the property really is perfect. I think the location is great. Um, and, you know, so the, you know, what what happens if we have a few, a few birthday parties booked or say, um, you know, a baby shower and we've got thirty people? And then we have to turn down the possibility of having a wedding for fifty or sixty people, which is going to be a lot more labor-intensive, a lot more the decorating and all the, you know, everything that we have. Um, you know, and am I saying that we'll go with the higher-dollar things only? Absolutely not. But when it comes to, you know, trying to make a supplemental living off of this and being available for people, we want to do that. I think, again, that that number would would really limit us, um, as far as, uh, as anybody even with something coming up at the last minute. So, you know, again, I I I think we we're respectful of, you know, of noise and traffic. And when I spoke with Bridget, I mentioned to her that I said, if the shoe were on the other foot, I absolutely, as a neighbor, would be concerned, you know, about what is your plan, you know, and and how are you going to move forward with this? Because traffic and noise are probably the two things that people are the most concerned about. I know there's, there's probably a noise ordinance here as there was in Powhatan. Um, her daughter got married at Lakeside and and, you know, I mean, music was off at ten o'clock, you know. And and again, we will be absolutely respectful to anybody and, you know, our conversations with Bridget and and Tony and Monica and, um, and, um, Vivian and Marvin, um, and even Craig and, um, Scarlett Ratliff, the Terra Noel people, um, have just been nothing, nothing shy of of positive and and pretty exciting. So I hope you will, I I would love for you to come out sometime, you know, and and see the, we've got a pond pavilion, we've got the the log cabin pavilion. And, um, you know, it's a, it's it's kind of a cool place and, uh, we'd love for you to come out. And if you had any questions and, um, we could give you some answers and let you see what we have and go from there and hopefully tailor your decision accordingly.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Does anybody live on the Mansfield property, the, when you and the village areas, if it's the woods next door, anybody?
Bridget owns that as well. Yeah, there's a, Bridget owns that, McMillan. Yeah, there's a, there's a, she's got a road that goes in, um, the, they've got a small road and there's a gate that that accesses all of the other pines that they have planted. So when they cut the timber, that's her access, so.
Nobody lives on there.
No, no, it's just, it's her, so Bridget owns all the property on three sides of us. And then, um, the, uh, Ratliff's own all the property across the street from us, which is, you know, solid woods until you get down to where they have their barn, right before, uh, I think it is.
Yeah, the other side's going to get you.
Yes, it does. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Here you go, now I'll close the public hearing. Turn it back to the, uh, planning commission members. Any more questions, comment, concerns?
If you went with, uh, twenty-four events, I think it was, that's one every fifteen days, three sixty-five to about about twenty-four. Change that to five, one every five days, that's seventy-three. It'd almost be a minimum, you know, seventy-three events.
And what you got to read in here is just a recommendation.
What they recommend.
Yeah, but they're recommending limited to that.
Right, so it's right now, it's just a recommendation.
Oh, right. So I think Travis is just saying if we don't want twenty-four, do we come up with?
Or or do you strike the whole recommendation?
We can recommend.
That's another option, but, Mr. Phelps, do you have something?
You know, we we redid and we rezoned Booker Park in there.
Yeah.
For the same type of bidding.
Yeah, did he?
And I don't remember any.
Restricting, there's no limit at the time, I know what.
The fairgrounds are there, which they had to go through the entertainment permit process. In theory, that could be booked every week.
Yeah.
I agree with the limit, the limit. I don't think we did it on Booker Park, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't say why we would do one.
And not do it.
And not to help us.
I I.
I'm fine with striking it, so.
What about the level of seventy-five people?
I think they agree, yeah, that one I meant to ask, did you guys agree to the seventy-five people one or?
Um, mainly because of what we believe to be, you know, the the amount of heart.
Did you have, right.
Yeah, so we we think that, uh, well, we were told originally that 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 under a hundred or a hundred and under was the category.
Oh, okay.
Realistically, um, you know, the 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 way we have things set up, the pavilion, the the space, the tables, basically, things like that. Um, it'd be a little tough to even go over seventy, seventy-five, but I mean, there.
I mean, I don't think anybody's going to show up if you have seventy-seven. But, um, I just want to make sure that you guys were okay. It looked like you were in your application, it said seventy-five. You don't want three hundred people.
We love folks, okay? But at the same time, we're very reasonable. We don't want a gathering that we can't gather because I'm, you know, I'm sorry. So I don't need a scenario that I have to manage. We need a scenario where we can facilitate and we can enjoy it. So there's got to be a moderate, reasonable number.
Plus, you're living on the property, it's not like.
We're not trying to set up the Mansfield, we're not trying to. Responsibly, and then here's what?
Home. Yeah. Right.
You still, you still go home at the end of the day, kind of thing, so. Um, yeah, we're not, we're, we're not interested in. I don't know, I didn't even, and just, that's too, that's too much.
Any other comments, concerns? I mean, with those recommendations, it's not that they've stated that, like a proffer, it's just the recommendations that Mike on them came up with.
Oh, right.
Oh, I'll make a motion that we approve it if we change recommendation number two from seventy-five to a hundred people and we strike the twenty-four month, twenty-four month a year.
He's just giving them leeway in case they have.
Easter made, made the motion.
At times, I'm assuming, one clarification, that's all based on noise ordinance anyway, so that would be with you, that's what I'm making. I know our noise.
Can I get a second and we can discuss it? Mr. Bonner? Second, now we can discuss any other comments?
I was like, wait, what?
Suggestions?
Well, I'd just like to say that, uh, having had ten-year-old daughter killed by a drunk driver, that I hope that, uh, carries people to have designated drivers being events.
Well, Mark. And we get to see it because, you know, the log cabin faces Route Thirty-Eight. We see the EMS. So we're very cognizant of the, uh, the fact that it is a thoroughfare. And there are, you know, some common traffic issues, but just, just the mind of people on the road that are not being responsible. I guess that I'm a good bouncer. I don't like disorderly anything. Um, we encourage every, all activities in a very responsible manner. And we can't be outside, this is not intended, kind of, right, so we can't be outside. I had no intention of letting any stuff get, you know.
Any other comments? Hopefully, questions been called for. All in favor of recommending to the board supervisors with a stipulation of seventy-five to a hundred and striking proposal for twenty-four events as out altogether? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries your dance. You'll come before the board supervisors next month, since, uh, third Wednesday, if I'm not mistaken. You'll get a letter and all that. They have the final say, we just make the recommendation.
Thank you.
Appreciate everyone speaking. And I wish you great success because we certainly need it in spots.
Especially if you're a father, I think.
Yeah. All right, moving to the second public hearing. Uh, request for Good Deeds LLC. Well, park pretty much, uh, storage.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a request for a rezoning, but it's also a request for a use not provided for, which operates similar to a text amendment to the zoning ordinance. So the applicant is Good Deed LLC, Barnard. Uh, they're requesting a rezoning of approximately point three acres of parcel thirty-one A dash one dash eighty-one, which is itself a one-point-five acre parcel. Requesting to rezone that portion, the point-three acre portion from R-one to B-one. And then additionally, uh, the applicant is seeking approval of a use not provided for in the zoning ordinance. Uh, and this is pursuant to section three twenty-five dash three-point-four, specifically to allow a tow lot business and to allow such use in the B-one zoning district either permitted by right or special, uh, subject to a special exception. So the, uh, property is in, um, designated by the comprehensive plan is in the Amelia Courthouse Town Center Development Area. We've provided in the staff report of the zoning ordinance section for the B-one zoning district, along with the uses allowed in that district, both by right and with a special exception. Uh, and also provided you with the use not provided for section of the zoning ordinance. Under the comprehensive plan section, we've provided you with the policies for the Amelia Courthouse Town Center Development Area. And then also indicated what the rezoning criteria and standards are, which essentially, uh, among the factors to be taken into account and consideration of any rezoning request are the location, nature and extent of the proposed activity or use and the possible adverse effects of said rezoning. So in terms of our recommendation, um, again, the applicant's intent of the rezoning and use not provided for, as stated in the application, is operate a tow lot business on this property. With respect to the rezoning, based on the zoning and use of abutting properties, staff would recommend approval of the rezoning of the point-three acres of the parcel, uh, to be one. We feel like rezoning to be one would be consistent with abutting in nearby properties and allow for uses that would be more compatible with adjacent uses. It is important to note the request by the applicant is not conditional zoning. Therefore, there are no proffers or commitments to the use of the property. All uses and development rights allowed within the applicable zoning district would be eligible. With respect to the use not provided for request, we would recommend approval of an amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow this use in the B-one zoning district as a permitted use by special exception. And we would recommend inclusion of the following term and definition in section three twenty-five dash two-point-one definitions. A tow lot would be a use that provides vehicle towing services and temporary storage, thirty days or less for towed vehicles. Stored vehicles may be damaged and or in need of repair, but all stored vehicles shall be operable and maintain a current state inspection sticker, county sticker or state vehicle tag, and shall not be dismantled or demolished. And then inclusion of this use is consistent with other uses in the zoning district, the B-one district, uh, specifically the automotive boat mechanical repair use, which is permitted in the B-one district, subject to a special exception. Um, again, we would recommend that it be added as a special exception use. And if the amendment is approved in the rezoning, then they would need to make a subsequent, uh, application for a special exception, provide more detail on the proposed use of the property. Uh, again, we've provided you with three options. Uh, recommend approval to be one, an amendment of the zoning ordinance, option two, deferral of the application, or option three, denial of the application. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Question I have, do we have to approve the definition of tow lot before we even discuss the, uh, permit? To be, to be put that in into the, uh, uses?
So that that's, there's no.
It's a referendum?
There's no permit being sought yet. Uh, what we're recommending is, and there's two ways to go about it. You could certainly approve the rezoning and approve the amendment of the zoning ordinance to allow this use. You could say that you recommend approval of it by right, uh, and then there would be no subsequent permit. Um, no subsequent special exception permit. Alternatively, if it's approved, subject to a special exception, then they would have to make that application separately. There's more details that would be required as part of that application that we would expect to see as part of a special exception application.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
I guess the zoning committee would be, and apparently we already need to beat about the second to eleven.
Yeah.
Probably interest us two at the same time and the definition at the same time.
Any more discussion? Questions before I open the public hearing? You have one, Ashton?
So with this being said, Michael, I'm totally confused. Would they have to vote this process and apply again and to another five hundred dollars?
It'll be grandfathered, if we prove it, no.
If.
Not sure, sweet.
Was your question, would they have to reapply or apply for a special exception?
Again, and pay the fee again.
If they have to pay a, because right now they're only seeking a rezoning and a use not provided for. And our recommendation. Sorry, go ahead.
If it's approved as it is now, it's a special exemption. If nothing's done for two years, it automatically goes back.
That's not what he's saying, no, we're, you guys are recommending rezoning requests, not the use.
All right.
Like only one of the two. So basically, they're applying for the rezoning now, and if you guys, if it passes and it moves through its resume, if you put it as a special exemption, they would have to apply for a special exemption or, uh, permit instead of a by right use. So they would have to pay those five hundred dollars on top of the rezoning, they'd be a special exception permit, is that correct?
Yeah.
Michael?
Yes, if it's approved as a special exception use, they've not made that application yet. And they've not, you know, they've not provided that level of detail that we would expect to see in that type of application. And they've not, you know, they've not provided that level of detail that we would expect to see in that type of application for us to even evaluate whether or not that use is appropriate based on what they're proposing to develop. We have no information relative to that.
Alright. Everybody clear?
So is that a concern? Or do they think it adds that about like, or then they wouldn't have to? If it was, if we change the by right, add that in, then it would matter.
Right. Right, but it, you know, we come up with zoning changes, then that goes back for a public here to discuss, and then it comes to the board supervisors. They have the final say as to putting it in there.
I mean, I've looked at these other uses, all real sales, barber shop. Still, we, yeah, restaurants.
I mean, it fits in there with other things.
I agree. That's what I was doing.
But that way they wouldn't have to wouldn't have to reapply. They would have paid five hundred.
If we if we approved the change.
The only person that's got by after seeing the sign ask about the lot is aesthetics. So maybe if there's a rubber, I don't know.
Well, they'd have to, they'd have to meet certain things.
Right. But that's that's the only drawback if you have like the vibe right is well, that's the aesthetics of the business.
Well, you think they'd have to have it fenced in too.
It's gonna be fenced anyway.
Yeah.
It's the chain link versus privacy.
Yeah.
It's different.
Yeah.
You didn't see that when they dropped the cars.
Well, if you said his definition says they can't be able to grip the sport thirty days, you know, they have a lot of.
That's right.
Right.
Well.
Because mainly like towing, like they get called to tow because they're in a bad spot, right? Like, it's not, it's not towing for breaths, right? Or is it of either one? I forget where our people meet. It was like, please call them. Any kind of.
Well, this is my brother's, he's the one applying for us. I probably can't vote on it.
Yeah.
But I can't speak to it. He's applying for a use not provided. The county currently has five different towing companies. And not all of them had to go through this, but it's like anything from R three, RB five, B one, A five, or the other properties.
We have a towing business already on B one?
Correct. Davis Repair, tears for road is currently B one. It's TJ's on A five, AAA on R five, flying still in R three. He doesn't want to go through another whole application. He's looking for a use not provided, which is what the county doesn't have, not not provided for. He's surrounded by Southern States, Nanvols and V dot and Millie County.
Yeah, it's just the one rental house. Stuff's there where you can keep it at R.
What is it? What is it? They tried beside of their, these old Namas, what did they do there?
It's motorcycle shop.
Cycle sound.
customization shop.
Yeah. And then you got Amelia Bottom on the other side.
Used to be Ford dealer.
So the only residential you have left is that one little house down.
It's not, it doesn't have to be B one. He's just thinking that probably should be B one if you're going to have a towing business there. He's really bought in for the use not provided for, which I would think he could approve B one and he's not provided for tonight.
Well, I'm sure the ones around there are Southern States and then that motorcycle shop are all B one already, right?
Or any box with B one.
I think it probably should be a by right use. It's just never been asked for.
Now, we'll say the reason we had to do special exception for the shop is because, I'm not really sure why, but I guess because you're generating oil and stuff like that. But since they're not actually doing anything except parking, then correct, I mean.
It's our vehicle repairs.
Right.
About right use.
Right. That's what I'm saying. It's not so.
Alright, any more discussion for public hearing? Still have to open public hearing. Here, no more discussion. I'll open public hearing. I'm changing it from a R one to a B one business. Anyone on camera that needs to speak? Nobody on camera. I'll close the public hearing, turn it back to the planning commission members. Any more discussion? Comments?
My my only concern, and I guess that would be not concerned with the rezoning, but is if you're going to have a tow and lot there, are they going to, are there going to be any regulations or rules or whatever for environmental stuff where you can catch and car leaking oil and antifreeze and everything else that have been registered? Is there any consideration needs to be put in there?
Well, I guess that could be, from the zoning could be, you know, what a tow lot is.
If you're going to add anything, then I think you'd have to put something to address where environmental concerns.
Well, typically, no, I was gonna say typically if someone comes and applies for a zoning certificate, Brady or now Jerry Wayne will look at it and certain businesses such as auto repair or something like that would be questioned and we actually consult environmental management.
Just a question.
Yeah, maybe it could be a simple list, put an environmental around the edge of property so nothing looks off the property.
Absolutely.
Because I think if you're going to have a wreck car or stuff too, right? Your own business, three sixty dollar. It's some sort of.
Is he gonna keep that upper like the trees? Where's that picture?
I I believe so, yeah.
Like, see how right down it's got the trees up front? Trees up front. And he kept that and then made his entrance and then it's like the lot back here.
Right. The job right by.
Just right now, you don't, I just see some stuff back there. But, um, green, I don't know if that's in or something, but.
That's kind of concerned to be taken up in the next, next step.
Yeah.
When they come up with the plan. But but what we're trying to argue, I think what we're arguing is, is there a next step? Because there's options. We either say yes and by right, and there is no next step after we rezone it, or we rezone it not by right, and then they have to come back special exception. Those are kind of the two things we're trying to.
Any more discussion or questions?
I would. I would say we probably have to have our own district. For the zones, all of them, but those.
So defer now, fix the definition.
He looked at you to start.
He was hoping this would be before the November meeting, but there was some thing that didn't work out and didn't make sense. You know, it's not soon as possible.
Well, if we zone it now, he still couldn't put it there until
Yeah, correct.
It goes to a public hearing for supervisor and us again, right? Second.
Either way.
Three to four months. He just wouldn't have to apply. Isn't that how how I understand it? Is that how y'all understand?
Let me, I can clarify. You've got, you have two requests before you under the one application. The one is the rezoning. And then the second piece of that is the use not provided for, which basically you review the use, which is proposed to be a tow lot. And we recommended that it be a, that there be a definition added so we know what that use is. And that it be listed as subject to a special exception. It could be subject to a by right if if that's what you prefer. But the the course of action would be on both of those applications, you would make recommendations. And those are then considered jointly by the board. You could certainly defer and come back at a at your next meeting. If you wanted to get a recommendation, some input from your subcommittee, you'd come back to the regular meeting on, you know, what you prefer the definition to be. But that, those are kind of your options.
Is one option to approve the zoning to be one? The use now provided for with adding the definition provided, that's correct?
Yes, that that's our recommendation would be that it be rezoned to be one and that the ordinance be amended to add the tow lot definition and add the use to the B one district.
Right.
So basically, basically what you're saying is that we can't possibly list every possible thing that could go in here. And we're saying this is something that we think fits in this B one zone and it's just not listed here. And that's a tow lot. Do we agree that that's a reasonable use in a B one?
That's okay.
And that's kind of the way I think.
Yeah, and and I would just add to that, you know, our recommendation that it be listed as a special exception use, we were looking at the existing uses, but really looking at the special exception uses and knowing that at least one of the tow lots that operates in the county now is associated with a automotive repair where that automotive repair is in the B one district, a special exception use. And it's my understanding that the tow business associated with that is basically considered accessory to that auto auto repair use. So that's how that was allowed. And I think you all raised some questions that we would expect to be addressed in a special exception application. You know, in terms of screening and fencing and environmental considerations, those are all things that we would commonly expect to be addressed through a special exception application.
I think it might fit better on a special exception. Now, this is not special exception request.
So they will have to come back. They will have to reapply with a special exception and come back after.
The lot is gonna be reapply again.
That's a lot cleaner, simpler. More straightforward.
I agree.
So we can move forward as a reset of it now. You just can't allow the, you've got to make the change, make it special exception.
And then come back in.
And. With that, you're. In in their terminology that are with.
Still, we're still vulnerable with me.
Needs to be fixed.
So April at the earliest.
With your pleasure. Alright, we beat the horse.
So I'll make a, I'm making motion. We approved the rezoning to be one, but we don't allow the tow lot, still need to get the special set. We require a change by zoning, but these probably need some time this month or next month, next month, I guess now.
Can you word that better? So are you going? They put the motion in, you just.
I'm I'm agreeing with your reason.
The recommendation.
But but you're the tow lot and you need to, you need to file a special exception.
Which is recommendation one, I'm pretty sure. Okay.
I need to post more money, but that's the way to do it.
Now, second step, recommendation one.
Heard the motion, heard the second. Any more discussion on the motion? And the next. Now, so zone really needs to meet next couple of weeks, truthfully.
Yes.
Not sooner, but
Because they can approve.
We'll get a date.
Back, yeah.
So. You've heard the motion? Everybody understand what you vote now?
Can I, can I ask a clarification? When you're referring, when you're referring to the zoning board, what is their role? I'm just trying to, for my.
Oh, it's us. It's just a committee within the planning commission that does zoning.
So you all would be recommending to the planning committee?
To add a definition, to add tow lot to the list of special exception.
Okay, so it, so your recommendation tonight goes to the board of supervisors for a vote. It doesn't, it does not, would not need to go to another body.
Oh, so. That's not worth it.
So say that again.
Right.
I mean, it's got to be reserved to be one before you do a special exception.
Right. But that's what I'm saying. They're going at two separate times. It can't go all together.
This can go together. The the request they have made tonight does two things, and your ordinance allows for that. They they are not making a separate text amendment. They they could have, but i- in this case, they are doing a rezoning and essentially what is a text amendment. It's a use not provided for. There's no, that use is not listed in the ordinance. And you have a provision in your ordinance that allows for them to seek that use to be amended going to the planning commission for a recommendation and then going to the board for adoption of that. And if it's adopted to include in the ordinance with a special exception, then once that's fully adopted, then they would come back to you all for the special exception.
Yeah, that's.
That's how your recommendation is written, right?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
There you go.
It's still somewhere in there, but yeah. But it's still, yeah.
I love it. You wish we could do option one.
Is that a?
I think what we're just trying to say is just because if if the board supervisors approves it next month, it still doesn't, we still have to then come back. And that's all we were saying. It's a two-step process. It it doesn't, yeah, they still have to come back. I think what you're saying is it doesn't have to go to the subcommittee. Is that what you're saying? That like, it doesn't have to go to a subcommittee. This, if we, if we approve it and send it to the board, we're already telling the board of supervisors, we want this on special exception, and that changes the ordinance.
Correct.
Okay, that's, okay. So they're they're adopting the new ordinance by us saying to do it.
Well.
But they.
About that. And it's got all the stipulations in here about about change to the ordinance, store vehicles should be operable, maintain, care, blah, blah, blah. Still think we ought to put some sort of visual buffer of privacy fence or something should be required between that and highways of people driving by, coming to town to visit, don't see a bunch of wreck cars in there.
But that would be, but you're saying that would be under special exception permit, correct?
That would be something that you would evaluate under the special exception. Now, you, I mean, you can have standards for specific uses. But and that's something that you could evaluate, but but if it's a special exception, that would, you you've set that expectation. And and that's something that you could evaluate and condition if, when it comes back.
I mean, maybe being able to pitch around his junkyard down there.
Yeah.
Same same thing. Same.
But we're, we're, we're not dealing with that.
Right.
We're dealing with just step one, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So we've, this deck is down the road.
Okay.
Yeah. It is confusing.
We have some other things.
Tell Scott. I'm kidding.
Alright, I'll still make the motion.
Okay, we're good. We're still moving. Yeah.
Are you heard the motion? Recommendation on second. Everybody understand what they're voting on? All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And Mr. Barnard abstained.
He's refusing. Yeah.
Motion carries.
I know. I'm glad we have to consult. I was gonna stop the problem.
Thank all, thank you for all your work, Michael. On both of them.
Absolutely. We appreciate it.
Thanks for the explanation.
Yes, sir.
Whatever you want to say. Alright. Only comments I have is comprehensive plan. Many met la- last Thursday, twenty-third. Kind of covered the mining type thing, cleaned that up. Kind of covered the mining type thing, cleaned that up some. Lauren did state with the surveys out. She thinks it's gonna be over five hundred. She says the most she's ever had in any of them. And. Majority of them came in, fill in from thirty, age thirty-five to sixty-five. Were the major parts that she brought out. They were, once it's all tallied, they'll give us a. Complete analysis of that. But she was very pleased and. On the mining, I didn't realize there's so many mines in the county. And what all, you know, the rocks and we had a gentleman come in. He was very passionate about rocks. Very, very passionate. And stated that Amelia is one of the few counties in the United States that has. A, a lot of the rocks in the world. So she said that's one thing that. Maybe we need to be. Promoting. And all. Another concern came up too that was discussed is. These old mines, we don't know if the shafts went straight down or went straight down and went sideways. So he was wondering. If there should be a concern if somebody bought a mining site. Built a house and it all of a sudden caved in. Whose responsibility was it?
There's a morph of mine that's straight down and he's got the traps.
Yeah.
But they're all maybe they're the.
But that was a concern pretty much that came up on those concerns. So. That, uh, other thing you can be sure to fill out by. February one, right? This disclosure. Well, February one's. Saturday, so it's in your packet. Got halfway through just for the. Thing. Capital improvement, I can, that committee needs to set a date tonight. The. Zoning needs to set a date tonight. And the only other thing on comprehensive plan update is our next meeting is February, Thursday, the twentieth. Ten o'clock. In the old live library home, that part of it. It's already been set up.
What was that one again?
What?
What was that again?
It's February the twentieth, Thursday. Next month.
Complaining.
Complaining. Ten o'clock. All those on the zoning, when would you like to meet? Now, all those on the CIP, when would you like to meet?
Zoning on February seventh, it's Friday.
February seventh. That suit everybody on zoning.
Fourteenth works for you?
What time?
Fourteenth. You want me to ten? We're gonna meet after lunch. Ten suits me better, but.
Let's do ten.
Alright. Two fourteen, ten o'clock.
How many people does it usually consist of?
Five.
We can do a year's work case, and I will throw in threes or.
Which will be our conference, I think.
CIP now, CIP is bigger. That's zoning. Everybody okay with that? So we'll meet somewhere in this building. Alright, now the comprehensive plan, that's the back half of your, back. Three quarters of your book. There is, it's, it's, if you look over it, it is color coded. It kind of tells you where things have already been approved. How they're set right now and then what each thing wants, but. Those you normally meet with each department head, they'll come in and kind of walk you through what they want. For, what they'd like to have. Got David. With. Dennis, me. You know, every day you like. Yeah, CIP.
See, you might run it that through the department head. I know we've got a lot of meetings just a month, but next month. The twentieth work is for him to come in also.
The twentieth?
We have special plans, especially with department leaders.
Twentieth thing will work if, if we have the. That's a comprehensive plan. We need to capital prove it. You take the department heads. What dates y'all already have booked?
The big dates for us is February, what is it, the eleventh and the eighteenth and the twenty-fifth. Those dates are already booked with board of supervisors meetings. Some have to do with strategic planning. The twenty-fifth is a budget work session that the board has, so I know all three of those dates are tied up in three hour blocks. So there's some time available in the mornings or afternoons, if you're interested in any of those Tuesdays. They could work, but we have some of those time slots already booked.
That's correct. Welcome to budget season.
Anyone have a date to throw out? August, not the first or third Wednesday, I'm pretty free.
I can't do anything with the tenth.
Alright, what's, you pick a date.
Maybe I want to do it before. Either the week of the third or the week of the seventeenth, we believe.
Well. So the committee meets and ranks, then it comes back to the planning.
Yeah.
We can get it back to the planning commission in February. By March, when we're doing our budget, that's when we need to know. We need to know this, CIP.
That would be a perfect timeline.
So you'd like to have first part of February, if possible?
Yes, sir.
As far as I know, it's alright. February the sixth, suit everybody? Six. What time? Y'all like ten? We met at ten and we met at one on those meetings.
One works.
One works? Alright, well, one o'clock. And we'll be supposedly in this building, somewhere in this building.
You said one thing?
One o'clock capital improvement. So that goes capital improvement is February the sixth, one o'clock here. Zoning is February the fourteenth at ten o'clock here. And comprehensive plan is February the twentieth at ten o'clock here. And you probably ought to send an email out. So that we. If we forget. The only other thing I know of that's coming up, my wife sent a text. She's out of town, but she sent me a text that there is gonna be a solar. Speaker speaking at the barn in Farmville. February, the Saturday, February, the fifteenth. At nine AM. At Barnes on Poorhouse Road. And it says to RSVP the two. Or Bureau Office or.
Like somebody trying to get solar or somebody trying to like?
No. This speaker, I haven't heard him. He's out of Rockbridge, up around Lexington. He does not like solar. He. He has all this information. That. Why solar's not gonna do what they claim it is and things like that. But I think these, they're trying to push this, especially for Prince Edward's got a big one wants to go in. Charlotte's got half a county going in. And. Lunenburg, I think, has got a big one wants to go in. So I think they're trying to get this. A little bit more about interest. But that's what that is.
Charlotte gets about percent of the entire area, which is a county.
Yeah.
Through and under so.
Yeah.
Say February fourteen.
February the fifteenth, Saturday, February the fifteenth at nine AM at the barn. Which is on Poorhouse Road, just where you go into Farmville. Does anyone else know of anything else that? We've forgotten or missed? Well, if not, we'll see you next month. Next week. Next two weeks. And hopefully it won't stay too cold.
Oh, never mind. Think you're right, Ash. I'll see it on here.